Good evening, everyone. Before our meeting begins tonight, we'll count education over by our legislative.
Heavenly Father teaches that even if we can't do great things, we can do at least the small great things, or do small things in a great way. We may always be sincere in our efforts to help each other, but I'd like to ask you, boy, I'm stumbling over this time. I'd like to ask you to bless us, bless us all at this meeting, and bless us in our service. Amen.
[Inaudible] To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Ms. Lloyd?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Commissioners have before you the minutes of our meeting of June 13th, 2016. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move that we accept the minutes of the June 13th, 2016 meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. We turn now to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address any of the agenda items tonight, our regular list of items that will be taken up. Please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and share with us your thoughts.
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. When you get to item eight, your entry into agreement with Kent State University Voice and Sandusky Neighborhood Initiative, would you explain that program on services for the society? Thank you.
Anyone else present wishing to address any of our regular business items? Okay, we have Mr. Fisher present for this?
Yes.
Is your mom with you? Are there family members?
Mom, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Would you like to come up? You're quite welcome.
It is my privilege to be able to present this proclamation to you. And why don't you look that way so the folks at home can see you? They don't want to see your backs, and they sure don't want to see you, so. This is a proclamation in honor of a very, very fine athlete, whereas Davion Fisher has won the title of Division One State Champion in the long jump, and whereas the city of Sandusky wishes to recognize and commend Davion Fisher for his achievement, and whereas Davion Fisher is a native of Sandusky, Ohio, and a recent graduate of Sandusky High School, and whereas Davion Fisher, as a member of the Sandusky High School track team, won the state championship at the 109th Annual Boys State Track and Field Championships in the long jump, and whereas Davion Fisher completed the Division One State Track and Field Championships and won the state title for the long jump of 24 feet. And whereas Davion Fisher qualified, completed, and placed in the 107th, 108th, and 109th Annual Boys State Track and Field Championships, earning him three consecutive All Ohio honors in the long jump, and whereas Davion Fisher, as a junior, broke the Sandusky High School long jump record, so the jump of 24 feet, 10 inches, and whereas Davion Fisher, through his hard work in both the classroom and the track, earned a scholarship to attend the Ohio State University, and whereas Davion Fisher, through his effort, has brought credit to himself, his family, and his community, now therefore, the Sandusky City Commission, on behalf of the people of Sandusky, Ohio, commend and recognize Davion Fisher for his accomplishments during his track and field career, and expresses congratulations and best wishes for his success and happiness as he pursues his promising future.
Congratulations. Good job.
Good job.
Thank you.
We want to see you jump from here out the room.
Thank you for being with us. And I understand that we have some folks here from Leadership Erie County Class and Advantage Entertainment who are going to make a brief presentation. Why don't you go ahead?
You want us up to the microphone?
Sure. Not sure where the folks are with the leadership program. We wanted to do a donation to the Sandusky Police Department for the K-9 Fund through Ohio Bike Week, through the Parade Fund. This year, we were able to generate $3,500 to go toward the K-9 Fund and cast for transportation. Casper Auto Group has also done $500 here as well, so we wanted to put that over to the police fund. We appreciate everything they do to help us do a successful event, and all the city does to trust us with doing as well. So, thank you.
I think a motion to accept is enough.
Second.
There's been a motion and second. All in favor, signify by standing high.
Aye.
Proposed? We voted on the room. Is Leadership Erie County?
Yes.
Oh, yes, please. I wasn't sure who was representing them, so good evening.
I have a order for those who's here. As part of Leadership Erie County graduating classes here, I'd like to show the members of the committee just please stand up with their last name, Jessica Burkhart, Mackenzie Spriggs, Pam Smith, Melissa Loughlin, myself, Danny Lewis, Ralfo Mammoni, he's not here, and Gary Norrod. As part of our fundraising for the class of Leadership Erie County, we raised $16,416.18 and will present a check to the city to go to our K-9 program.
Well, thank you for leaving Advantage Entertainment, your contributions to very worthy cause. Thank you for being here. We very much appreciate it. More motion? Yes, we need a motion. Do you need a motion? This is a big one. Put it right to the big motion.
Second.
There's been a motion and second. Without objection, the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Please be.
On behalf of the Sandusky Police Department, we appreciate all of your efforts. They had approached us about, you know, a need for the police department, and we wanted to replace K-9 Justice, who retired at the end of the year, so we kicked the idea to Joe Haberger, who does a phenomenal job with the Leadership Erie County, and you can really tell over the course of the last couple of years, very thoughtful and rational projects that the group has done, the showers that were just opened up, the, you know, this K-9 Fund, the ballparks that are getting done, so there's a great, you know, positive effort that they're doing, the leaders, the new leaders of the community or upcoming leaders, so we appreciate that. Also appreciate Steve and Advantage Entertainment. They had put out a challenge, so to speak, to members that were in their group, that if we raised $3,500, they would match it dollar for dollar, and through that challenge, we were able to raise over $5,000, so we appreciate that. The, with the donations that are on the manager's report later on tonight, we are just about $37,000 that has been raised for the K-9 Fund as a result of this effort, and we sincerely appreciate it, and we look forward to bringing the K-9 here very shortly and having it be a contribution to the community, so thank you very much.
And all of you folks are here, don't feel as though you're pinned down and you're free to, you're welcome to leave at any time. You're welcome to stay as long as you like and watch us grind through some of the issues that we have to deal with.
Cool off in here, huh? That cooler on, though.
We have next one of the more scintillating events that is on our calendar every year. We have the tax budget public hearing, and so I will declare that public hearing open. And Mr. Solway, if you would walk us through this legislative exercise, I'd appreciate it.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Hank Solway, finance director of the city of Sandusky, and tonight we're here to have a public hearing on 2017's new tax budget and just give everybody a little bit of perspective on what this is. Prior to 2011, the Erie County Budget Commission had waived this requirement, so we did not have to do the public hearing and actually provide a formal tax budget to the Budget Commission, but if you read the information submitted in the communication, kind of see the history since 2011, we have the holding hearings and kind of walk through the process. Why do we do this? The easiest answer is a compliance requirement that is tested when the external auditors do come and do our audit every year. According to the Budget Commission, the three main reasons why we do this is it helps to assist the county auditor in setting proper tax rates, it helps to allocate more government funds, and it basically helps to start the planning for next year. So even though we are approving a document that had a lot of numbers, a lot of historical numbers, we're not being tied down any specifics in the numbers. It's basically complying with what the Ohio Revise Code is stating at any given juncture. So walk us through the budget process. The next big deadline for the city will be November 1st, when by charter, we have to have the first draft of the 2017 budget presented to the commission, so that's really when it'll start to get going. So tonight's really just an opportunity to comment, commission in public, if there's any specific questions that anybody has tonight or after the meeting, feel free to contact our office and walk anybody through any questions that they may have. So it's not really a Q and A, it's more of a formal compliance requirement, comply with the requirements. That's all I'll have, and I'll sit down and I'll turn over to the commission for comments, and we'll see if there's any.
Wait just a moment, Mr. Solway, see if any of the commissioners have any questions before your comments. I know this is a compliance process, and we will go through a full budgeting process starting from all, but this is what we're moving out to do for this particular requirement.
I want to say, since I didn't have the opportunity to promote our website, there is a lot of information, financial information that's available on the city's website, Google City of Sandusky, before our opening page, you go to the finance tab, you will have access to all the monthly financial reports for at least five or six years. We've got the E2A update reports that are now online for residents and officials to review, and we also have our comprehensive annual financial report embedded online, so we really encourage people, you don't have to really understand the numbers as much, but take time to get educated and just look at the reports, review them, ask questions, get involved, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Solway. This is a public hearing, so anyone present wishing to speak may do so. Wish to speak to this matter, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, share with us your thoughts. Not seeing anyone moving to the microphone, I will declare this hearing closed. Before we turn to our regular items of business, we have received a very thoughtful petition from a group of Pipe Street residents who would present that through one or two of their representatives this evening, and I'm not sure who it is that's here. Would you mind stepping to the microphone, and we, all of us have the petition that we've received by email now, and, but you could share a little bit of your thoughts. I understood you wanted to make a presentation. If that's correct?
That's correct.
Please.
My name is Larry Robinson, and I'm here with Dean Shield, who was a neighbor and building property owner on Pipe Street. We came down here this evening to present to the commission a petition that we circulated through the neighborhood, and we have about 60 names of property owners and residents on this petition, and it specifically is to address some of the traffic issues on Pipe Street. We're having a terrible time, and we only look for the situation to get worse when the sports complex, south of the old airport property opens up. The major, the two major, excuse me, streets that pass between Perkins Avenue and Cleveland Road, which are the major traffic thoroughfares, is Pipe Street and Remington Avenue. Now, I won't go into detail because in the petition, I've pretty much given you an overview of the situation. I've outlined the problems that we see as residents, and also some of the solutions that we've discussed as far as being those solutions that would help. Now, I'm sure that you have a list of experts with the city that can probably do even better than what we've done as far as coming up with solutions for the problem on Pipe Street. We're dealing with a situation that is a traffic control problem. There are vehicles on Pipe Street that should not be there, buses, trucks, et cetera, et cetera, and also there are safety issues. We have buses, tour buses going to Cedar Point that are nine feet wide, and the lane is only 10 feet wide, so you can imagine a caravan of three or four of these traveling down Pipe Street with six inches on either side, and when you have traffic coming the other way, no sidewalks, children, pedestrians are all included. So I really would like you to all take a look at it. I understand that you, that everybody did get a copy of the petition, and in any way that we could help as residents, Dean and I have talked about sitting out at the end of the driveway with coffee in the morning and counting the vehicles for you if that's necessary, but Kelly has a way to get ahold of us, and if there's anything that you need, anything at all, any questions answered, or anything done, we'd be more than happy to help with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I, I read through it, I don't know if everybody's seated, because it just came this morning, but I want to thank both the gentlemen for organizing your street and collecting your thoughts and presenting them in a thoughtful, neighborly way. These are stressors, big time, for all of you and all of your neighbors. I see it driving up and down both Remington and Pipe. I suppose in some ways you might want your puppy road back, but no, no. But it's a GPS issue, and it's probably a signage issue as well. You had some very thoughtful ideas, and the experts, don't include any of the folks up here, will, will work through that, as you indicated, and I'm not sure what the follow-up would be, but I would expect at some point in the near future, we would reach out to you through the city manager's office and maybe put together a meeting, talk about options, something like that, so that we get a, you've given us a pretty clear sense of what the issues are. We are very much aware of them before we received your petition. We can see it, and we've heard it from other residents, so I want to thank you for coming tonight, presenting the petition, coming up your neighbors. Please, sir.
Could I make one comment?
Please.
Young gentleman who's the broad jumper?
Yes.
It's kind of interesting to note that if he were to stand on one side of Pipe Street, he could completely jump across the grass.
Probably right over the bus, too. All right. We will turn to our regular agenda items. If someone would care to make a motion to accept the communications from staff recommending the legislation, I appreciate it.
So move.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Without objection, the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Mrs. Pressley, would you present item number one, please?
Yes, item number one is a second reading. It is an ordinance amending the official zone map of the city of Sandusky to rezone a portion of parcel number 56-01241.000 located at 629 Washington Street from our two family residential district to downtown business district.
Commissioners have heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the second reading.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Ms. Pressley, would you poll the commissioners, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lauchard?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is about to, item number two, please, Mrs. Pressley.
Item number two is an ordinance amending the official zone map of the city of Sandusky to rezone 16 parcels from our line of 40, single-family residential district to commercial recreation districts.
Commissioners have heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
Will the adoption of this ordinance under the second reading?
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Mrs. Pressley, would you poll the commissioners, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lauchard?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number three, please.
Item number three is an ordinance amending Part V, General Offense Code of the city of Sandusky's classified ordinances by establishing Chapter 521.101 to prohibit smoking in Shoreline Park.
Commissioners have heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the second reading.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Now, I was absent at the last meeting, and I understand that you did a decent, quite good discussion, so I have a motion that I would like to offer, my way of seeking a way to bring some harmony on this issue and, and being at some of the most important issues that I think that the legislation is designed to address. I do think that this is a public health issue, and I do think that children in playgrounds are being unfairly exposed to smoke, and I think that we should do better. There are about 1,300 communities that I found a list of on the internet, people, cities have completely banned smoking in public parks. I tend to think that's a little bit much, but I would favor a different approach that put a ban in place within 25 feet of playground equipment, you know, and the place where you've got the chips and all that sort of thing. 25 feet seems to be a fairly universal measure, and, and then I would also like to see us put a relatively serious fine in place for littering. Right now, it's a misdemeanor, it's left in the discretion of the court, but my understanding is that we do have the authority to put a minimum fine in place, and I would propose a fine of $150. So that's all a long way of saying that I've moved to amend, to modify the legislation to apply to all parks in the city, all playground equipment, the area, the chips around that, to ban smoking within 25 feet, and then to increase littering fines, $150.
Second amendment.
Mr. Poole?
Second amendment.
Thank you. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lauchard.
I believe I can support your position on that. This, the crux of the matter is about the children, and I see that allowing the smoking in the parks in general, but away from the playground equipment is fair, and that works with the, the way that we're moving forward, as people are not really smoking as much as they were, and the health concerns, so I believe that would be the right move to make.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
I also agree, and thank you for that amendment. I think when we actually put this in action, you're going to find that the boundaries that the playground equipment is in, it's softest, puts you probably a complete 25 feet from the equipment, so it should not be much of an adjustment. There may be a few parks where you would like to wrenches back three or four feet from where they already are now, but if we have decided that it is a good idea to take the position that says we think children should not be exposed to smoke, and you shouldn't be smoking a cigarette while you're pushing your child on a swing with a light bulb next door, so it's not a reasonable request to make, and I think this is a good balance.
There's a motion and a second on an amendment, further discussion on the amendment.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lloyd?
I have to say, I come, I disagree with the amendment. I don't know how we expect our children to get from the playground and then to the restroom or to the pavilion, because there's more than 25 feet in that area. I would hope that everyone did their due diligence and did some more research on the effects of secondhand smoke. The National Parks and Wildlife Services stated that banning smoking in national parks will further increase the community, community's enjoyment of and safety in these green open spaces while reducing littering, and the ban also has, obviously has health benefits. That happened in May of 2016. Of all the chemicals that are in the cigarette butts, I'm not sure how we're going to catch every cigarette butt that's going to be thrown out by smoking 25 feet away and actually be able to find those, the $150, instead of just keeping them out of the parks. I talked to Pete Shade from the Health Department today, and the Erie County Health Department, the entire campus went smoke-free in 2011, and there's only 20% of adults that smoke in Erie County, which is down from 28%, which is great, and 44% of those 20% of current smokers responded that they stopped for at least one day in the, in the past year because they were trying to quit smoking. By creating a smoking ban in the entire park, in all city parks, it's going to push our residents to be healthier, and the 2006 report from the Surgeon General came to the conclusion that there's no safe level of exposure of secondhand smoke. So when our children are entering the park, they can be exposed to it. When they're going from the playground to the restroom or to the pavilion to meet their parents, or just walking down the pier, they're going to be exposed to it with this amendment. So I feel that a full-on smoking ban in the parks is the right decision. They can, public sidewalks, you can smoke on public sidewalks, it's very, very close, you can see the playground equipment, so I would have to say that for the health of our citizens and our children, knowing that it can cause heart disease, lung disease, it's actually linked to causing other forms of cancer. For children alone, it's a known cause of sudden infant death syndrome, lower birth weights, and older children exposed to secondhand smoke get sick more often than children that are not exposed. It increased ear infections. As a healthcare professional, I feel like I have to state this, and just, I think that this is not the right thing to do, but I would challenge everyone in the room and watching at home to try and make the city of Sandusky a healthier place for our children to live and play. We have to move, we have to be forward-thinking if we want Sandusky to succeed. I encourage our staff to continue to bring things like this to the table, so we can be a leader of small towns and continue to attract those that are looking for an active, healthy, welcoming place to live, so I am more in support of the way the legislation read before tonight.
I agree with everything you said, and I wish we were there. I don't think we're there just yet, and politics sometimes is the art of possible. And we do two readings of this legislation. This is not tennis review with staff in any shape or form. I, I like listening to these new ideas, but I received a lot of feedback, and I am troubled by a vision that I have in back of my, in my mind. I mean, the tobacco industry is one of the most evil industries out there. They just, they, they get people addicted, they know exactly what they're doing, it's just awful what they do. I had a grandmother who tried many times to stop smoking, never could. Sweetest lady in the world. She ended up smoking even when she had lung cancer, because she could not stop, and it just struck me that prohibiting her from going down to the park to fish, and she loved to fish, just wasn't really the right thing, so I, I guess that's where I came out, and I had a lot of people giving the same kind of feedback. Maybe in 10 years, we'll get there. I don't think we're there yet.
I would have to say, I had a grandfather that had lung cancer and smoked all the way through it, but he didn't need to smoke 24/7, and it was, he was able to not smoke around us and walk away to do it, so I would hope that our community would do the same for our children in our parks, so the entire park, not just the playground.
Mr. Chairman? I want to make sure that everyone else is.
Oh, you're good.
Was there someone else that wanted to speak?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brady?
It, it was noted that I did not take a position on this issue at the last meeting, and I want to remind all of you that I felt like I was refereeing a heavyweight fight at that last meeting. I chaired that last week, so I didn't get an opportunity to be in on it, but my feelings then are the same as my feelings are now, and I, I cannot understand why all of us cannot see that the evidence on secondhand smoke is a refusal. It, it causes, it causes heart attacks, it causes strokes. I guess the thing that bothers me most, and I have, I have empathy for, for the person who's addicted, certainly, but to me, who speaks for the child? The child in that playground, playground does not get to make that choice. I think we have to make that choice for the child to separate them further than 25 feet from smoking, and I, and I believe the original legislation was set up to be a test case, we were going to try this in Shoreline Park, not doing it in all the parks. I thought-
through it, but he didn't need to smoke twenty-four seven and it was, he was able to not smoke around us and walk away to do it. So, I would hope that our community would do the same for our children in our parks. So, the entire park, not just the playground.
Mr. Chairman.
I want to make sure that everyone else is.
Oh, you're good.
Was there someone else that wanted to speak?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady?
It was noted that I did not take a position on this issue at the last meeting and I want to remind all of you that I felt like I was refereeing a heavyweight fight at that last meeting. I chaired that last week, so I didn't get an opportunity to be in on it, but my feelings then are the same as my feelings are now. And I cannot understand why all of us cannot see that the evidence on secondhand smoke is irrefutable. It causes, it causes heart attacks, it causes strokes. I guess the thing that bothers me most, and I have empathy for the person who's addicted, certainly, but to me, who speaks for the child? The child in that playground does not get to make that choice. I think we have to make that choice for the child to separate them further than twenty-five feet from smoking. And I believe the original legislation was set up to be a test case, we were going to try this in Shoreline Park, not doing it in all the parks. I thought that the idea was this would be our hybrid case, we would see how that worked. If it worked, we could move forward with it. If it did not, we could certainly amend it or refine it from there. And I guess the thing that bothers me is where's our law department on this issue? Is the ordinance that we had drafted, that we are voting on tonight or we're going to vote on tonight, is that, I will ask the question, is that defensible?
Mr. Brady?
The current one as drafted is definitely defensible. In fact, I drafted it myself. The amendment is also defensible too, so I guess it's, pick your poison.
So, we don't have an issue, we don't have a problem defending either one?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Watt?
I do have a question about the process for doing this. The initial legislation at first reading was the one that's listed on here and now Commissioner Murray's asking for an amendment of that. Should this also call for a second reading because we're amending it?
Again, through you, Mr. President, to Ms. Twine. My reading of it is that we don't actually have to do that. My advice is that that would be recommended because there are many folks, and this is a wholesale change from what the legislation currently was, so my advice would be that it should come back as a second reading if we choose to amend it. Right now, we do have two motions on the table. We have a motion to approve and then we also have the amended motion. So, I think we would need two votes, one to deal with the initial, Mr. Waddington's motion to approve and then if that fails.
You amend first and then you have to vote on the legislation.
We have to take.
It came in the other order.
Off the table, by through some.
I made a motion.
No, a motion to amend always.
Would supersede the.
Yeah, you got to vote on that one first and then you vote on the legislation because otherwise, if you vote on the legislation.
Every amendment, right.
According to what, okay.
Through the Commission President, and this may be to Trevor, I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but would you need two separate pieces of legislation? It would seem to me that the, on the amendment, the ban of smoking within twenty-five feet is one piece of legislation, but it would seem that you would need a separate piece of legislation to lift the basement on the minimum litter. It seems like those are two semi, but mostly unrelated things and generally speaking, you would use two pieces of legislation. Is that accurate or no?
I should say the rapidly disappearing Mr. Heyburger.
No, that would definitely be a separate piece of legislation because that wouldn't deal with litter just for parks. That would be a whole separate charging of itself under a different codified section under our section.
Okay.
Definitely doable, but just definitely in a separate legislation.
Okay, so, I take it that my motion needs to be modified, so I will modify my motion with the pool. We'll modify it second to address solely the issue of the scope of the smoking ban and we'll deal with the other issue that is defined separately.
Second.
Further discussion on the motion to amend. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, is there any additional? I was listening to what folks are saying. It is true that the, I also did some research on the Centers of Disease Control. I ran a thirty-six page report that indicated, and that thirty-six pages, one line that said that secondhand smoke could cause cancer. That's in the entire report. Additionally, there are three pages of recommendations of what could be done and I just want to point out, none of those recommendations included anything that suggested you limit smoking or do anything else. Now, everything everyone says is true. The question is, are children at that park, in our park, not across the nation, being exposed because of the behavior of citizens who also own and should have an opportunity to use these parks, creating a problem for children? And I would suggest, I recognize that Mrs. Lloyd indicates that there are clouds of smoke and then a child can't get from the teeter totter to the bathroom without being inundated with smoke. I would suggest anyone that has driven through there, paid any attention, recognize that's almost not true. Smoking at the end of the pier, that smoke not drifting to the pathway to the bathroom from where the kids play and it's, I suggest that we recognize that this city's got more people than, I have empathy for many folks. You can die from overeating, but we're not outlawing soda pop. So, the concept of the government deciding, we justify restricting you from using your parks or over limiting your use of it because we're saving you, well, Americans get to decide for themselves how they want to die sometimes and we should just probably leave that alone. If there was a definitive report that said this was imminent danger to children, it'd be different. We moved them away, it's on the water, it's the weakest place in the town and there's just no truth to the reality that these kids are being exposed. They're more likely to get hit by a car crossing the roadway trying to get to the bathroom than they are to die from cigarettes, secondhand smoking. That's why I have to say.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Watt?
I have a question. If we're going to do a twenty-five foot rule and make the litter, that's part of the amendment, correct? A hundred and fifty dollars? What about the rest of the litter? What if I'm twenty-six feet away?
I was told I had to separate that out, so it will be a minimum littering. We'll make another motion in a minute to ask the, to call in legislation for a hundred fifty dollar fine for all littering. But, right now, we've been advised by the law department that we need to separate that out. Further discussion on, is that, Ms. Watt, you don't look like you got a satisfactory answer.
Mr. Chairman.
Does this make, again, I must be.
I think we're all a little confused here because we're changing the amendments.
Right.
And I would feel comfortable if we would have a second reading on the amendment. So, I want to make clear.
Right.
Because I think we need to have some feedback from the community before we finalize this since we're changing this.
And I think, yes, that's what I was intending and that's what Mr. Heyburger was advising that we do. So, we would move to amend, to apply to all parks, twenty-five feet with all playground equipment, the playground space, the wood chips and all those things. And then we'd have that legislation available at the next meeting. That would be a second reading of the modified legislation, although we'll send legislatures modified, a much bigger amendment's on the fly than this, but that's okay, that's fine. That's all we're voting on tonight.
Mr. Chairman, just clarification. So, we're voting on the amended motion. If it passes, then goes to second reading. If it fails, then we have to vote on the second reading.
Yes.
As is.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion to amend?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
No.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
No.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That amendment becomes a part of the ordinance and now this will be the first reading of the modified ordinance, subject to a second reading at the next meeting. Discussion further on the legislation as modified. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
No.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
No.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance passes on first reading. Mrs. Cresser, item number four, please.
Item number four is a resolution adopting the tax budget for the City of Sandusky for the calendar year two thousand and seventeen, authorizing the submission of the tax budget to the Erie County Auditor and declaring that this resolution shall take effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules of Section fourteen of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. If Solway, anything to add? Any questions? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the resolution, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
I did that backwards, I apologize. I should have had a call for a roll, for a vote on the motion, but is it okay if I ask for that now? We just voted on the resolution. So, this is on the motion to adopt it in accordance with Section fourteen. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on that motion?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That motion is adopted and the resolution is adopted in square. Item number five, please.
Item number five is an ordinance approving and adopting the two thousand and sixteen five-year capital improvement plan for the City of Sandusky. First read.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Watt?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance at first reading.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mr. Brady?
I think Mr. Klein is about to memorize this document at this point in time and we have had the unanimous approval from our Finance Committee and we held a somewhat uninformational meeting one day this last week also, so I believe that we have had a lot of discussion over this document and I am looking forward to seeing the implementation of some, if not all, of the projects, probably not in the order that you have set them up, Mr. Klein, but other opportunities will come along and we have to be patient and hopefully our electorate will be patient also. Good job with that.
Further questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole?
I'd like to echo what Mr. Brady said. We have a document for which the staff has worked very hard. They've, we now recognize that we have money for a large number of projects over the next five years, all of which we may not do, some of which any one of us may not totally agree with that it's to be done at all or maybe not anywhere it's done and we will discuss those and debate them as we come up. Let's find out, but it's a good document.
Further questions or comments? Kudos to Mr. Klein and to all the staff who worked on this. This was a challenge that the commission gave to Mr. Whoopsir about a year ago, I think, Mr. Whoopsir, along those lines and we said, you know, we've never had a long-term capital budget, let's put one together and after we completed the comprehensive plan, the master plan, we were able to look that far down the road and then Mr. Klein and the department had such a work of putting together the particulars and so I think it's a very exciting document that allows homeowners and potential private investors outside of homeowners, businesses mainly, to make investments alongside what we are planning to do. It's a very hopeful document in that way and I think in a way, in a very important way, contributes to economic development because it sets forth a path and indicates that, you know, we're thinking about doing new things and making improvements to the city and that we will be reliable partners going forward. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington?
Mr. Brady might remember and I'm sure you do, Mr. Murray, my second term a few years back, we couldn't plan on a week out, worrying about making the payroll, lights, the water plant, we had a lot of issues and there was just no money, you know, and this is a lot nicer and I'd also like to thank Aaron Thursday night, that was good, opened my eyes up to what we can do and the plan is fluid and it's nice to be able to look forward and see some projects that's going to be done in our community. So, I thought that was, Dick, you probably remember, don't you? It was, nickels were like manhole covers.
Further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the ordinance, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance passes on the first reading. Mrs. Cresser, item number six, please.
Item six is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed Caldwell Street reconstruction project, Phase Two, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Chapter fourteen of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion.
Chairman.
Mr. Brady?
I'd ask Mr. Klein to give us a brief synopsis of what we're doing here. I know that, I would ask you to dwell on the amount of money that we're going to save because that's what's important to our residents.
Sir, through Mr. President, this is the second phase of the Caldwell Street project. If you recall, we applied for OPWC money last September and we get that money, at least we'll get a contract around the middle of July. That contract is for a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to be split fifty-fifty for the entire project. So, right now, the engineer's estimate is right at three hundred and fifty thousand and we expect to use, you know, for every dollar that we spend on this job, we expect to get reimbursed or get paid back a dollar. So, this will be, the project will look pretty much identical to the north half of Caldwell, which was just finished up and we should be coming back to the commission for final acceptance of that job soon.
Good example of how long some of this planning takes, both developing the plans for the street and then applying for the grants, I mean, it can take, it can be much more than a year from start to finish when all those parts and pieces are considered, so it's very important that your department stand top of those things. Further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Item number seven, please.
Item number seven A is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase cyanotoxins automated assay system from Abraxis Incorporated in Warminster, Pennsylvania for use at the Big Island Water Works Plant and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion.
I know Mr. Klein has a good story to tell us on this issue also. This is one of those kind of testing procedures that we have to go through. Go ahead, Mr. Klein, tell them all, we're going to save money here.
Through you, Mr. President. Right now, at the water plant for the cyanotoxins, which is related to the algal blooms, we spend two staff members twice a week or once a week, each staff member tests for this equipment. They do a manual test at the plant. The equipment that we have, it costs about five hundred dollars a week. We run two tests, so it actually breaks down to two hundred and fifty dollars for the entire week to do these tests. The equipment that we would be purchasing through this program is equipment that was tested in Oregon and Toledo over the last year. There's only one manufacturer for this equipment, it's Abraxis, and what it will allow, it will free up the staff time because it's an automated testing equipment, so we don't have to spend the hours and we don't have to spend the dollars. The reimbursement on this, if we don't get the grant dollars that we're requesting in the seven B, the reimbursement on this would be just over two years. If we do get those grant dollars, it would be under one year. So, we're hoping to, we expect to get it, that's what they made the money available for, was for this exact type of equipment, so I don't see any reason we wouldn't, but I hope not to come back here and eat those words.
Questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion with respect to item seventeen A?
Mr. Poole?
Mr. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Okay, then Mrs. Cresser, would you press item seventeen B, which is the budget?
Yes, that is a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to file an application with the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency Division of Drinking and Groundwaters for cyanotoxin testing equipment grant funds for the Big Island Water Works Plant, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, what is your pleasure?
Chairman?
Mr. Cool?
I'm going to adopt this resolution under suspension of the rules and accordance with Chapter fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and second discussion? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Item number eight, please.
Item number eight is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Kent State University Cleveland Urban Design Collaborative of Cleveland, Ohio, for professional services for the implementation of the Sandusky Neighborhood Initiative Neighborhood Planning Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
The adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in accordance with Chapter fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and second discussion?
First question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson, a question about how this is going to work, let's make a swing.
Yeah, Ms. Twine, do you have the point first?
When I turn mine on, maybe someone else can turn theirs on.
Yep, turn mine off.
Or I could speak loud. Just keep mine off. All right, thank you, Ms. President and members of the commission. In April, staff gave a presentation here at commission on the Sandusky Neighborhood Initiative and at that time, city commission authorized requests for proposals. City completed direct mailings as well as the posting on the city website. Three proposals were received, two firms were interviewed, city architecture from Cleveland and the Kent State University Cleveland Urban Design Collaborative. The selection committee chose CUDC as the best firm and is recommending the city enter into a contract. The total project cost is $60,000 and would be paid from issue eight infrastructure funds, although it is anticipated that $30,000 would be reimbursed in local collections. Once a contract is approved, CUDC will begin and it is anticipated that the plans would be complete by the end of January of 2017. The goal of the program is to plan for and implement sustainability strategies while creating environments that attract and support private investment within targeted neighborhoods. Five to seven neighborhoods will be selected for the first round. The neighborhood should be diverse in geography, income, and culture. Community outreach will occur within each neighborhood to help shape the plans, the programming, and strategies within each neighborhood. Community outreach, throughout the process, we will look for an organization or an institution to partner with within the neighborhood. Each plan shall include one catalytic project, which could be a park, housing development, a bike path, et cetera. Strategies will be identified which will help to create a sense of neighborhood, such as branding, signage, and event programming. Lastly, a model block program will be instituted within each one of the neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions or comments, commissioners?
Could you explain a little bit more about the model block recommendation? I realize we don't, we've kind of been in the process to see what it is, but could you add a little bit of detail to that, please?
Through you, Mr. President, and I'll start the conversation, but then I'll pass it over to Director Lasco because he'll be directly implementing the model block portion, but this is a larger scale planning process for, like I said, five to seven neighborhoods and those neighborhoods, although they're not yet determined, would likely be around a thousand households is what we're anticipating each neighborhood to have. Within the neighborhood, there will be a smaller model block area, concentration of, you know, a geographic concentrated area that the model block program would take part in, which would include items such as rehabilitation and demolition, but I'll let Director Lasco go into further detail on that.
Through you, Mr. President, members of the commission. The idea of the sort of model block suggestion, which again is still being evaluated, but is to look at sort of a micro area within each neighborhood, typically it's an area between about 100 houses to 125 houses, in which you would strategically try to address and intervene in each particular property. So, if it's a vacant property, is that, you know, ushering it through the tax foreclosure process, is it demolition, is it working with them on rehabilitation of that property? So, it's sort of a deep investment into a very sub-neighborhood of what is a larger neighborhood. These are areas where we can look to target our housing resources, which we rolled out a couple of weeks ago, but again, it's sort of just that deeper level investment in a very small area of each particular chosen neighborhood. Again, not an outright given, but just something to be explored as we're going through the neighborhood selection, identification, and implementation process.
So, if I understand what you're saying, Steve, I would love to cover areas for this. Instead of spreading the resources out like peanut butter, to the point that it's so thin that you almost can't really detect it, what we're doing is, what we're trying to do is we're trying to start a little fire, a spark, really, and getting something going in that area that we hope will be really transformative to a larger neighborhood.
Yeah, that's correct, and it really is sort of that house-by-house intervention. For one house, it may just be modest landscaping assistance, for another house, it may be an investment of demolition dollars and then splitting that lot up for the adjacent property owner, so it's a very particular detailed investigation into each particular property to sort of create an area, create an identity, create the spark, as you mentioned.
And those neighborhoods and those blocks will be chosen by the folks at Kent State as opposed to all of us here at the table or anyone in this administration, I think. All right, thank you. Questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cool?
I'm happy to see this and I think probably the best part of this, for me anyways, in the scope of work, the design and engagement portion. It means that these folks are going to actually interact with folks in the neighborhoods and I think as they move across the city and more people in the neighborhoods are able to work with these folks and see what they're trying to do, it should really generate some enthusiasm in the, in the community for what we're doing and I, I think once folks understand what's going on, that we're, it's going to be just really great for the city.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Waddington?
This is a spark or a start for a home run, I guess, for outside of downtown. A lot of the emphasis has been downtown, downtown. I want downtown to do well, but we have to take care of our neighborhoods. I hear it all the time, all the money, it seems like all the emphasis or work from staff and us as commission body is downtown. I think this is great to get in the neighborhoods. I've talked to Eric about it several times, not only going in as Kent State can pick out the problematic areas, areas we can fix up, but that'll get, it shows that we're listening to the rest of the community. Downtown's fine and I want that rebuilt too, but neighborhoods are key. If we really want to turn Sandusky around, we've got to fix the neighborhood problems. And I'm hoping that this does, as somebody said at the table, that we do catch fire and it really takes off. It's on my side, but...
Further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number nine, please.
Item nine is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement to purchase a power load cot system from Stryker EMS of Portage, Michigan, for use in the fire department, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules and in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and second discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart?
You know, I had the opportunity to actually use this cot system, being a liaison to the fire department. I was able to spend the night in the fire department, thanks to the chief, and this is something that's absolutely necessary to prevent injury with firefighters going forward. It's absolutely essential. I like to say that our firefighters are doing a great job, by the way, after spending the night there and, actually, they had me go out on the calls with them to see how everything works and so I'm really satisfied with it. I ended up actually sleeping in the fire station and missing a call, so they, they kind of reamed me for that. You know, because you actually get up and you sleep and then they reamed me on taking comp time because I had to leave for two hours, but, you know, all in all, it was really a great experience and this is definitely something that's needed for the firefighters.
Further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number 10, please.
Item 10 is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a subrecipient agreement with the Center for Cultural Awareness to provide a citizen's circle program and to expend an amount not to exceed $15,000 from the fiscal year 2016 Community Development Lot Grant Funds, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and second discussion? Ms. Blanca, would you mind explaining the different pieces of legislation that we have? We've got, I guess, one, two, three, one, two, three, four in a row that you have proposed and while you're making your way to the podium, would you confirm that these are already amounts that we set aside or approved for spending in the CDVG plan and these are, these are federal dollars that we're receiving, but it's necessary that we enter into specific agreements that the commission has to approve in terms of awarding these funds to other organizations to spend as we indicate as part of the CDVG fund?
That is correct. Commission already approved our 2016 CDVG action plan, so now we're just moving forward with that plan and entering into the agreements with our four subrecipients. The first legislation will be entering into an agreement with the Center for Cultural Awareness. For $15,000, this program will assist X offenders by providing them with resources and mentoring they need to become sustainable and productive community members in Sandusky. The program will only assist X offenders who are residing or intend to reside in the city of Sandusky. The intent, the intent of this program is to reduce the recidive, sorry, rate of X offenders and prevent crime. The second...
Why do we, why do we take them one at a time, I think?
Okay, okay.
Otherwise, we could paper them and wrap them together, so. Questions or comments on the first piece of legislation?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine?
Charlie Adams, the executive director of the Center for Cultural Awareness is here. I don't know if she would want to make a comment or anything. You don't have to, but I just thought that you...
I would like to thank the commission, understand, I guess, thank the commission for supporting us in previous years. The funds have definitely been an asset for us, have been able to help a lot of X offenders come back to the community because there is a large population of offenders in Marion and Mansfield who, when they get out of jail, return to Erie County and probably 80% of those reside inside the city of Sandusky. So, by us being able to interact with them, help them find housing jobs and kind of monitor them, it kind of helps keep out some of the crime in the area and help lower the unemployment rate. So, we really appreciate you supporting us.
Further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number 11, please.
Item 11 is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a subrecipient agreement with the Erie County Health Department to provide the Healthy Lifestyle Program and to expend an amount not to exceed $10,000 from the fiscal year 2016 Community Development Lot Grant Funds, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Chapter fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and second discussion? Ms. Blanca, do you want to give us a synopsis of this one, too, please?
Yeah. The purpose of the Healthy Lifestyles Program is to educate teens and adults about various aspects of healthy living and to motivate through empowerment. The sessions will be offered in small group sessions that include hands-on, interactive sessions at neighborhood centers that teens and adults already gather at and participate in other activities. We also have Devin Pollock from the Health Department here. He wants to say anything additional.
Hi, welcome, thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, we are, we have targeted two areas for this grant, the Sandusky, I'm sorry, the Boys and Girls Club of Sandusky, the Teen Center, and a center that we've already started working on that they are continuing their funding through December 31st of 2016 and that is Erie Shore Network. And that is the two programs that we're targeting for this for, so we want to thank the commission for continuing to support us in our efforts to make and create healthy lifestyles for the city of Sandusky. Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Watt.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Watt.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number 12, please.
Item 12 is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a subrecipient agreement with the volunteers on Huron County to provide the Help Against Homelessness Program and to expend an amount not to exceed $40,000 from the fiscal year 2016 community development block grant funds and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of rules and full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
There's been a motion, second discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
What's Brady?
From time to time, a company that I own is the recipient of dollars from this program, so I'll be, it's one of the discussion, it was, it's more interesting.
Ms. Blanca, would you care to walk us through this?
Yeah. The goal of this program is to create an environment that allows participants to avoid becoming or returning to homelessness, as well as assistance to those already homeless. The program will provide rental, mortgage, and utility assistance to those who are in danger of eviction and/or foreclosure to prevent homelessness and enable families to maintain their current housing. I know Sandra Anderson with, with the Volunteers of America wanted to be here. I'm not sure if she was able to send a representative tonight, though. So I apologize about that.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments, Commissioner? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Mr. Stain.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Watt.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Mr. Stain.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Watt.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number 13, please.
Item 13 is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a subrecipient agreement with the Community Action Commission of Erie, Huron, and Richland Counties Incorporated to provide emergency home repair and accessibility modifications and to expend an amount not to exceed $40,000 from the fiscal year 2016 community development block grant funds and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Watt.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of rules and full accordance with section 14 of the city charter. Second.
There's been a motion, second discussion? Blanca, would you walk us through the fourth and last of the subrecipient agreements, please?
Yes, this final subrecipient agreement is for the Community Action Commission, and they will utilize the funds to provide emergency home repairs and/or accessibility modifications within the city of Sandusky to qualified residents who meet HUD income guidelines. Qualified homeowners will receive physical modifications to render their homes safer and more accessible. Tim Brown is also here with CAC. Tim, do you want to add anything?
I just want to thank the commission and the commissioner for allowing the Erie, Huron, and CAC to continue our collaboration with the city. It's an excellent program, the need is there, to Mr. Wattington's point. We do what we can to try to help eligible homeowners stay in their homes, modify their homes, deal with emergency needs. Excellent program, we have a very good collaboration. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion?
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Wattington.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Wattington.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number 15, please, Mrs. Cresser.
14 is a, the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for the transfer of C1, C2, and D6 liquor permits from Justice Systems Incorporated, doing business as Cleveland Road Shell, to NOVA 8516, doing business as High Miler, 2200, 1631 Cleveland Road. It is requested that the commission clerk be authorized to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control. The city has no objection to this request.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for a motion to have City Commission Clerk Kelly Cresser notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control. The city has no objection to this request.
Second. There's been a motion, second discussion? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Wattington.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
That motion passes. Item number 15, please.
Item 15 is a request from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for the transfer of a C1 liquor permit from Petroleum Delivery Services Incorporated, doing business as Venice Road High Miler, to NOVA 8561, doing business as High Miler, 2221, 323 Venice Road. It is requested, it is requested that the commission clerk be authorized to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. The city has no objection to this request.
Commissioners, having heard this, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I move to authorize Commission Clerk Kelly Cresser to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control that the city has no objections to this request.
Second. There's been a motion, second discussion? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Wattington.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
That motion passes, and that concludes our regular items business. We will turn the meeting over to Mr. Whipser for a city management's report. Welcome back, Mr. Whipser.
Good to be back, sir. Good evening, everyone, commissioners, audience, staff. I'll start with the donations. First, a $25 donation to the Friends of the Greenhouse from Joanne Cross. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
Second. There's been a motion, second discussion? Without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks.
Great. A $50 donation to the Fire Department from the Sandusky Memorial Day Association. I'd ask for a motion.
Second. There's been a motion, second discussion? Without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks.
Great. A planter for Butler Street in the amount of $75 from Commissioner Dave Wattington. I'd ask for a motion.
There's been a motion?
Second.
There's been a motion, second discussion? Without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks. Yes, sir.
I believe Mr. Brady paid for it. We didn't want, I, we just didn't want the planter's back, so we donated them back to the city greenhouse and whatever, that's all. And I believe he paid for it, and Mr. Brady did also, so that's kind of why I did it that way.
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't do it.
Moving on, I have several donations to the K-9 Fund. I will read them all, but I'm going to pause to recognize one of the donors at the beginning of that. First is a $1,000 donation to the K-9 Fund from the Russell Perch Classic in memory of Tom Romick. The Camp Street Bar, the Sail Inn and Star Lanes also participated in that $1,000 gift with the Russell Classic. J.J. Brindley from the Russell Classic is here. I want to thank her and the folks from that group for their donation. I also just want to say that I had a chance to know Tom Romick. He was a close family friend. I went to school with his son, Scott Romick, and he was a really wonderful man. And the Russell Classic has been an incredible way that his friends, family, and loved ones continue to honor his memory and to give back to the community. In addition to that, $1,000 donation to the K-9 Fund. There's a $50 donation from Caitlin Lawrence, a $300 donation from Sam's Club Associates, a $50 Memorial Day Association donation, and a $100 donation from Fisheal Haas, Kim Albrecht LLP. I'd ask for a motion to accept those donations.
There's been a motion, second discussion? Without objection, the motion will be approved. And hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks to all of those folks who have made those contributions and are contributing to the K-9 Fund.
Thank you. Also, we have received a donation from Serving Our Seniors. I thought I saw Sue Doherty here earlier. I think she may have had to leave. For $19,000, which is a collaborative grant from the Erie County Community Foundation, the Whitman Weber Foundation, and Serving Our Seniors is broken down with $10,000 from Serving Our Seniors, $4,500 each respectively from the Whitman Weber Foundation and the Erie County Community Foundation for a total of $19,000. These funds will be used as local match to complete a $95,000 renovation of the Amtrak facility to begin construction later this year. They're going to leverage an additional $76,000 in federal funds as we continue to serve the people of Sandusky and Erie County. I want to thank Marvin Ranaldson for his work on that, as well as the generous donations of Serving Our Seniors, Whitman Weber, and Erie County Community Foundation. I'd ask for a motion to accept those donations.
There's been a motion, second discussion? Without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks.
Great, thank you.
Great work.
Moving on to new and old business. First of all, we have a new staff member that I'd like to introduce tonight. Talon Flore, our new community outreach coordinator, is in the audience. We're very excited to welcome Talon. This is a new position to the city of Sandusky, and I just want to echo Commissioner Poole's comments regarding the Sandusky Neighborhood Initiative and how exciting it will be for the community to have a chance to interact with those consultants from Kent State University. We think that Talon's position is a doubling down on that process with Kent State from the perspective that we'll have a staff person, and not only a staff person, but a recent Sandusky High School graduate and class president of Sandusky High, who went off to the Ohio State University and graduated, did so with the idea that he wanted to come back into town. He's already served the community as an appointee of the city commission to the Charter Review Commission, and ultimately, it was his sense of service and sense of pride of being from Sandusky that really set him apart in that interview process, and we couldn't be prouder to have him board and working on ours and your behalf out in the neighborhoods on a day-to-day basis. So Talon, welcome. We're going to put you to work, so, although the reviews, the early reviews are good from Director Byington.
Florence, do you realize that our new employees are expected to give a five-minute speech to the commission?
You ready?
Welcome, and we've heard a lot about you, and especially if you're great and exciting, good people, so, welcome, Florence.
Great. Welcome, Talon. Also, I just wanted to let the commission know, we have brought to your attention and for approval, an expansion of, well, working on a slum and blight study and ultimately the creation of an urban renewal plan that would lead to the potential expansion of the Chesapeake Tiff District or allow the funds collecting the Chesapeake Tiff District to be distributed in a new urban renewal plan area. That process is underway to ultimately fulfill that expansion in addition to the approval of the city commission. We'd need approval from the school board. It would not redirect any existing funds from the school board, from any current or future investments. I will be presenting to Dr. Sanders and the school board at their board meeting tomorrow, just very generally what that process entails and what it would mean to them. They have been very supportive both at the board and staff level throughout the process. I just wanted to make you aware that I'll be at their meeting tomorrow morning. And then finally, under the new business, before I get into the departments, as many of you probably saw in the newspaper on Friday, we are looking to finalize the city seal process. We know this has been a longer and laborious, more laborious process than many have thought it would be. Ultimately, when we wanted to go back and look at a refined version of the current city seal, our designer, free of charge beyond his current contract to do the bicentennial work, provided some adjusted options, both of which were on the front page of the paper on Friday. One of them is meant to be a remastered version of the existing city seal, and one is to be a slightly adjusted version of the existing city seal. That includes a roller coaster, which was one of the most popular items we heard from the community that they'd like to see in the seal that didn't exist. In response to that, that article, we'd heard from some folks that they thought that the remastered version of the current city seal was too much of a departure. The only significant difference you can see is that the lake itself is in a lighter blue in this version. And so based on the promise that was made by the commission and the staff to the community, some of our commissioners wanted to make sure that we discussed whether or not we wanted to keep that lighter blue in option one, or alternatively to keep the darker original blue. And so I would just look for feedback from the commission on whether they prefer option one or two, and staff will support either option. Option two will remain the same. And so ultimately, the reason for the lighter blue was that we'd heard from some folks that it was hard to differentiate the lake in the first edition, and so that ultimately, the lighter blue sets the lake apart. We have no strong stance either way, and Kyle Roth, the designer, has agreed to make a darker blue the option. We have the rest of this week to make a determination on that, and I'd just look for your direction.
Commissioners, what is it we wish to ask for in this poll? So we're choosing now between, to be clear, we have the two options, the one with the light blue and the one with the dark blue. The dark blue is what the original seal was and is, my lapel and your lapel, a couple others around here, so...
So the, and ultimately, whatever you decide for this option will be option A, and then option B will be a version that I can pass around. I have a sample ballot that Commissioner Poole had requested, just so we can understand that. This includes the lighter blue, just because it was done before, we got the feedback on the darker blue. So we will reprint this with the darker blue before we make that public, but ultimately, we just want to make sure that we do what is the intention of the commission and their representation of the will of the public.
Well, I, Mr. Wattington, do you have any thoughts on this? Yeah. Well, I would like to see us have this option with the dark blue, which is the seal that's right behind us there, because that's what we said to folks. And if the public chooses to have a different option, and has a roller coaster in lighter color, I think that's great, too. So that would be, that's my motion.
That's a sample ballot.
Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, we need a second to discuss it.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, Mr. Wattington.
To discuss something.
I talked to you and I believe Mr. Brady over the weekend about this, and I attempted to go to the car show on Friday night, and I got stopped by four or five residents 20 yards, I didn't even get a beer, I left. They questioned, I thought the intent originally was to have the original, and correct me if I'm wrong up here, the original one, and then Mr. Roth, at no cost, was going to do a digital-friendly one, and then if he did another one, and then we were going to do like a contest like July 4th. So, do you want the original one? Are you happy with that? Vote for that, it's public on July 4th, and the register, and we were going to do something online here. And with this one, when I got the paper, I called you, you were in your office, you looked at your pen, okay? And the colors were different. I talked to Mr. Brady, I think he heard pretty much what I heard.
Talks to me a lot.
Six o'clock in the morning, but that's what I thought we were going to do, is have the original one, and then that takes out, I guess some folks thought it was, we got two of them here, but where's the original one? They felt like they, it was manipulated, and they didn't have a choice. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, it was just an oversight, I don't, I, I saw, I didn't even catch the different color.
And through the commission president, Commissioner Wattington, there was absolutely no intent to manipulate. We believe this was a, an updated version of the existing seal, with the only change being the color of the water, but we understand the technicality of having changed that color and want to do what the will of the commission and the community is going forward, so...
So there's a motion and second, further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
The noticeable difference to myself is the lack of the roping around, around the, along with the roller coaster. Is that, it's intentionally lacking the roping, that just wasn't, we just missed that. And is there artistic reason hard to reproduce, if I heard you?
Through the commission president to Commissioner Brady, the reason for the twine being absent in the second version of the seal is because when you see it, and if you look to your ballot, is a good example, in the smaller form, which is generally the size that you see the seal, it is, the twine in the detail is much harder to read in its smaller format than it is in its larger format. So it was the opinion of many of both the citizens, the graphic designer, and even a few of the commissioners, that the seal reads cleaner without the twine, and that there's a lot of nautical references already in both the original and the new seal, that ultimately, that purpose is served with those features.
I just wanted, I just wanted to be clear that it was, it wasn't just an omission.
No.
You think it's clear.
Mr. Chairman.
Rope and not twine, so we, he talks about...
Sorry, sorry.
Mr. Chairman. I'm honestly not sure what all, you guys talked a lot, I'm not sure what we did, but I do recognize, I do believe, and I just, and the audience agrees, that the lighter blue water looks nicer.
Yeah.
Now, whether or not, you know, what the vote comes out to, I don't really care what the thing looks like. Personally, I think the lighter blue is nicer looking than, is an improvement to the dark blue on the original. Comment about the rope, I think the rope sets it off, you know? It's like getting all dressed up and not putting on the jewelry, ladies. You get it? It does, yeah, you didn't wear your earrings, you know, and you went to a ball. So I think the rope is important, and I hope when people vote that they'll vote that they want this rope on here. Other than that, whatever the citizens want will be fine for me. But I do think the blues ni, the lighter blue sets it off very nicely. Lighter blue water.
So the motion on the table is, this is option one, and then the one without the twine, rope, and the roller coaster and the light blue is option number two.
We're choosing, we're cho, through the commission president to the commission, the intent, I guess, of my request is that you choose between the remastered version of the original seal with the lighter blue, or the replica version of the original seal, which is the darker blue. The choice of which the commission makes will be option one in next week's vote.
I thought that's what I said, but, okay.
No, it is, so I apologize.
Basically, we're deciding, do we keep the original to allow them to vote original one or...
Why don't you just put three on, every dollar?
Or remastered.
Put three options, put three options to be done. Yeah, the dark blue, light blue, and, you know, original.
So the motion is to keep it all dark blue. Further discussion on the motion to make option A, all dark blue? All in favor of keeping it all dark blue, signify by saying aye? Aye? All in favor, that was it, just two? All in favor of having option one, which is the original seal, just with the addition of the light blue color?
Yes.
Aye.
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 Aye. Yeah, we're good. I think it's actually an improvement.
Is that what you got? I don't know what we got.
Aye. No, I think I know what we got, yep.
Which carried?
You know, the only thing is, we did eliminate the ability to keep the original, even though I think it's an improvement.
I think so.
Mr. Chairman.
We won.
Poole.
I just want to make sure...
Because we've talked a lot, commissioners realize what we did. We just changed the seal.
No, we didn't.
Well, hang on, hang on.
Well, in a sense, you did, yeah.
Yeah, we did do that, and so, is there a reason we don't have the original, the blue we just voted for, and then the others?
Through, through the, through the commission president to Commissioner Poole, we had considered, you know, what we had stated publicly was that we would bring a version of the existing seal that was substantially, but potentially with modest updates. We thought the light blue was a very modest update. We didn't know that it would cause controversy, and so the intent, the intent was, the intent was that is the original seal, and if you look to many other seals or logos, they do evolve gradually over time, you know, and those, those contrasts seem starker when you view them in a longer period of time. That being said, we'd be, you know, we're, we have no strong opinion whatsoever as to whether option A should be the, the dark blue or the light blue, and so we're, we will, we will put forward what is the will of the commission, and that was ultimately the intent of our request tonight.
Okay.
Okay, you know, on these great monumentous issues.
We did, I'm sorry.
We apparently have some confusion at the table, and so Commissioner Lloyd is going to attempt to clarify this.
Okay.
Good luck.
So, with your ballot that you have, this is what people are going to vote on in the public vote. So, the seal on the right is staying there. The seal on the left, this is what we're voting on. So, as commissioners are going to vote on which one is going to be on the ballot on the left. the left.
Which is the old one?
Yeah, that's what I said. I just realized, we changed the seal.
Right, right. So, if you, if you want to give residents the option to have the original seal, you would want to, so this is what we're choosing, this one or this one, to be on the left side of the ballot, and then the right side of the ballot is going to stay the same.
But the only one that's the original is the solid blue.
Is the solid blue.
Yes, right, right.
And I don't understand, okay, he explained why, why we didn't just put all three up there. And I, I personally believe and will vote for the light blue. I would like to also say, though, it's Eric's fault. The dark blue is not on there.
We could, we, just through the commission president, now, one of the...
So, I'll make a motion that we change the left seal.
We did.
We knew what they were voting on, though.
We voted for the light blue.
He didn't know what he was voting on.
We already voted.
The original.
But we already voted.
And that's okay. It's just, I don't know that everyone was clear on what they were voting on.
No, I was clear on it.
Okay.
So, you're not allowing residents to have an option of the original seal that's behind us right now?
Correct.
Okay.
On this ballot, we're not, just recognize, 25,000 people are not going to vote on this, and we'll get feedback from other folks in downtown, who are talking to you about it, whether they're concerned. In fact, if you put a copy, a picture of the original over there so they can see, as this room recognizes that blue, that light blue is an improvement, it makes it stand out very nicely. I, I'm only kidding, it'll be, it'll be fine.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we're good. Okay, Mr. Wilkser, clarify that.
That was, that was sausage making at its finest. I say that's, that's best kept behind closed doors generally, so. But I'm glad, and honestly, we were very excited about whatever option you chose, and we're glad that we had that conversation. I got to kind of get my bearings here. Give me one second. Okay, moving on to new business in the police department. Officer Chris Rankins began serving in the Community Impact Officer position starting June 13th. Officer Rankins will focus primarily on the east side of town, east of Hayes Avenue to the city limits. He will stay involved in the schools as well, visiting them throughout his days once school starts back in session. Officer Castante will focus primarily on the west end of town, west of Hayes Ave to the city limits, as well as remaining active in the downtown area. I know Chief Forzak's been very deliberate in picking these assignments and ultimately which officers are there. I think it is a fitting tribute to that commitment to community policing that our last two Officers of the Year are our Community Impact Officers, in Officer Rankin and Castante, and we welcome Officer Rankin to that, that Community Impact Officer team. Moving on to the fire department, the fire department 5K takes place this Saturday, July 2nd, 2016. Registration forms can be found at the fire station, or participants can register on race day at 8:00 AM. The race is set to start at 9:00 AM sharp. Proceeds benefit the Sandusky Fire Department Community Outreach Programs. I know that I am, and my family are registered to run again this year. I think I spent most of last year's race chasing my then-three-year-old around the course, who kept getting out of his stroller. I hope at four, he'll be better behaved. I hope not. I know several of our commissioners also participated last year, so I hope to see everybody there. The finance committee, sorry, the 2015 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report is scheduled to be filed with the Government Finance Officers Association by June 30th, 2016. Like to thank Director Soloway and his team for that. Moving on to public works, on Monday, June 13th, the Erie County Metropolitan Planning Organization requested proposals for projects that may be used to earmark federal transportation from, funds from the state of Ohio that are currently unused. They were looking specifically for safety-oriented projects, and they needed the information by 5:00 PM the same day. We weren't exactly sure, Aaron and I talked about this, as to how serious this is, if it is meant to speed up the projects that have been awarded that money, or if they're seriously looking at reallocating. But we didn't want to lose out on an opportunity to bring dollars back to Sandusky, so we requested a total of $950,000 for three projects that were listed in the bicentennial plan, as well as the five-year capital improvement plan. That includes the West Sidewalk Ability Initiative, which seeks to bring sidewalks to the west side of the city, particularly along Venice Avenue, as well as the Scott and Columbus Avenue Safety and Pedestrian Improvements, and the Huron and Wayne Street Safety and Pedestrian Improvements. No timeframe is set as to when we hear back, and we'll let you know, though, if we were successful in receiving those funds. Also, the Ohio State University and State Division of Wildlife are performing a research project regarding, I really apologize for this going in and out, regarding the nesting habits of the Black Crown Knight Heron, which is a state-threatened species on our very own Turning Point Island. I didn't actually know where Turning Point Island was or existed. It's just north of the, kind of, I guess, east of the coal docks, north of the marina deep, in deep water as well. It's, it's a small landmass. I actually wasn't sure if it was freestanding. Apparently, it is an island. I think that was created with dredge at some point in the past, but it's apparently, or potentially, a nesting site for this state-endangered bird. And so, Aaron's been working closely with them to be able to get them access. And I know Aaron, I don't know if you already have while I was out, or plan to, hopefully to get out there with them, so we can get our feet on that island and kind of check out what's out there as well. So, the things you learn when you work for the city of Sandusky are pretty interesting. Moving on to community development, on June 7th, the city held a stakeholders' meeting for the Downtown Sandusky East Bay Plan. The meeting was well-attended and productive. The Trust for Public Land is currently reviewing past plans, exploring existing conditions, and will be in a meeting with stakeholders throughout the summer, and will begin a design phase portion of that process come September. And then finally, Public Services and Recreation. Due to storm damage from earlier this month, the intersection at Hancock and Huron will remain a two-way stop for vehicles on Hancock Street. Stop signs have been put in place and will remain in place until further notice. We absolutely do intend to replace the signals at that intersection. It's a busy intersection, cars go fast, et cetera, but that process will take time to bid out and cost out for that replacement. And then finally, the city auction will be held on July 30th at 9:00 AM. Any questions, please call Kelly Cromer in the Department of Public Service. Again, that's a city auction on July 30th at 9:00 AM. You can call Kelly at 419-627-5884. That concludes my remarks for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkser. Commissioners, questions or comments for the city manager?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
Wednesday night, the 29th, the EMA Pipe Creek Flooding, that's Marcy Capter, that's the big, the grant money that we got. Aaron, are you there? It's Wednesday night, 3rd floor, Erie County Building. Are we going to have anybody there? Pipe Creek Center back there. I'm planning on going. That's part of that Marcy Capter grant with the county and city that Kathy Mueller got about four, started about four years ago, the money got hung up Columbus, and now that's getting released.
What's the date on that?
Well, let's, Mr. Klein, follow up with, you know, in terms of the best personnel to have.
I just wonder if everybody's going, I'm going to be there, I just want to...
That's this Wednesday. I don't have it on my calendar.
Yeah, I know I had a conflict that night, and I wasn't able to make it. I was trying to think of who else might be a good representative for that.
Yeah. That's right.
I just wondered if they...
Wasn't on my radar.
Mr. Brady.
Mr. Wilkser, I had an opportunity to talk with Mr. Link regarding using those flashing stop signs that we purchased for the traffic cycle that we lost on Columbus Avenue, and implementing those on Huron and Hancock Street, and he agreed that that may be a prudent use of that. I would encourage that. I travel through there almost every day, and that is more than a 990-degree turn to look back at traffic coming, so I think it'd be a prudent use if all departments locate with it, too.
And through the commission president to Commissioner Brady, I walk that route often, and those short stop signs are hard to see. I've found myself missing them, you know, kind of, you know, it takes a while to readjust, so I think that would be a really, the more visible, the better, while we look for the long-term solution.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Cool.
I think this is more in the form of just a request as opposed to trying to go to a motion, but could we get some action on Pipe Street relatively quickly? Because if we're going to have to do legislation, it's two weeks before we meet again, and then runs, it runs into time, so I appreciate some interaction quickly.
Mr. Brady.
An opportunity to spend about a half hour of the hour that I spend on commission days with Mr. Klein, and we reviewed in detail the petition by the Pipe Street people, and I've asked Mr. Klein, and he's agreed to bring options and concrete, workable solutions back to us within two weeks. That is a residential neighborhood. It is critically important that we, that we deal with that issue upfront, and they gave us both suggestions, and they gave us some solutions. I'm not saying that all of them are workable, but we're going to evaluate all of them. We're going to do that in a very timely fashion, and Mr. Klein is certainly on board with that. Thank you.
Further questions or comments for the city manager? Then we will turn to items of old business. Anyone having any items of old business? The camera's still on, I want to make sure I give all these checks to Mr. Soloway. I'm sorry, who?
Mr. Chairman. I had an opportunity this last week to attend the ground, I guess, it wasn't groundbreaking, it was the implementation of the Victory Kitchen showers that Commissioner Twine spoke very eloquently at, and it was very well-attended, and I think that it is a terrific asset in this community. It is, it is unbelievable in this, in our society, in our country, that we have a need for those kind of facilities, but we should be, we should be immeasurably proud that that exists in the city of Sandusky, and that is just one more gold star for the Leeds organization. They headed up the fundraising for that plan extremely successful, extremely generous, and there was, there was not a dry eye in the House when, when the pastor spoke, and when Mr. Cast spoke also. That was, that is a very, very wonderful way to use our dollars, use donated dollars in this community. I think it will serve this community for decades to come.
Further questions or comments for the city manager? I'm sorry, we're on old business, further items of old business. Any items of new business? I would like to make a motion to ask for legislation to be brought in to put a minimum littering fine on of $150.
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. One other item I'd like to put on the table, and I don't know where all this goes, but Mr. Wilkser has now been with us almost two years as of next week.
Yep.
And so, congratulations, and thank you for the fine work that you've been doing for the city of Sandusky. That means your contract is halfway through, and I would like to begin discussing the process of, or the prospects of extending your contract another two years. I want to make sure that you always have that reasonable period out in front of you, so long as you wish to, to remain here, and the commission wishes to have you here. So, much, so, up for discussion to see what thoughts folks have on that, or whether that's something we should take up to the next meeting after.
Is that a form of a motion? You make the motion?
I guess it's a motion, yes. I would move to extend Mr. Wilkser's contract for two years.
I'd like to add that motion.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mr. Wilkser, anything that you'd like to add?
First of all, commission president, I welcome feedback on my performance. I think it's been a wonderful two years because of the support of the commission and the leadership of the commission. This is a position that I aspire to stay in for as long as the commission will have me, and so, I welcome both feedback on how I'm doing, and also, potentially, an extension, certainly. Thank you.
Then a motion and second, further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
City manager's doing a fine job.
There's probably not a reason to not extend his, his contract, or to extend it one way Enough said. I'm going to vote to extend his contract. This is early. It just, in terms of our options of what to do, he has another two years on the contract, and I empathize with the idea, given, it's okay. I'm not, I'm hesitant about doing that, only because it's so far out, and it just limits our options, and that's the only reason why. There's no reason that we couldn't, if you do the same thing you've done for the last two years, then I'll be happy as heck that we extended your contract. If a year from now, you have a change of something, then I'll be like, why did we do that? And that's, and that is my only concern, why you did it this, this early.
Hold his feet to the floor. Ms. Twine.
Okay.
I agree. I would like to extend Mr. Wilkser's contract, but I think that it would be appropriate to go through some type of evaluation process with him, to provide him some feedback as to some areas that you're pleased with, and some areas for improvement, so.
When did we last do that one?
And I think that's probably been about last July, August.
January? Or?
We can't do it.
Performance evaluation.
So, sick, it was about last summer sometime.
It was, I think it was January.
November or December.
And through the, through the commission president to the rest of the commission, I believe we talked about it that time, but then we have not had a chance to follow up, and actually tying, there were some built-in performance metrics into my contract, and we had discussed, because the commission had recently considered the adoption of the bicentennial plan, to tie ongoing metrics to that plan itself and the goals of that plan. So, perhaps that is a way to do this, is to, is to go through that process now more formally, and then at the will of the commission, whatever length of time you think, we can tie those metrics to, I'll abide by, because I'm happy in my position and want to stay in it, so.
Mr. Chairman. When I, early on, when I was running last year, that was one of the points, I met with Derrick, and I went through the revolving door down here of city managers, and I certainly hope, if I do leave at the end of the four years, that he's still in that seat. So, I would support anything, if you want to do it tonight, next week, whatever. He does a great job. He's out there. I call him anytime, he always gets back with me. You know, from past history, that was problematic at times.
Yeah, he's been, he's been the best.
Yeah, up front, and I, I hope that he's here four years, maybe even 40 years, you know, if I don't run again, but I am, I can't go through that revolving door again. That was one of the reasons I ran, because I thought, finally got somebody, it looks like. It's stable now, issue eight passed. My vision is, you know, we got some money now, things are rolling well, and I don't want to see any disruption. So, that's my opinion, and I'd vote against it if it's next year or three years.
Okay. All right.
I'm good, I'm good.
How about if you and I follow up in terms of what that, because I don't know, I don't know that seven of us can draft something like that here at the table.
But I think it would be a good idea to tie into his, the bicentennial plan and those types of things.
So, there's a motion and a second on the table, further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries, subject to, or not subject to, the motion carries, Ms. Twine and I will work on some metrics that we might include in the contract, another document that is formally adopted by the commission, and obviously, we'll need to work with you, Mr. Wilkser, in terms of making sure that we have your behind on that contract, too. Further items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I have, need to make a motion for an executive session this evening regarding pending litigation.
Second.[1661.83]
Then a motion, second discussion? Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That executive session is set.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I have, I need to make a motion for an additional executive session regarding union negotiations.
Second.
Then a motion, a second discussion? Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That executive session is set. I had a conversation with Mr. Poole earlier today, and agreed to support setting an executive session on a personnel matter. Do I need to be more specific than that, because I can't remember the department? Mr. Poole, if you remind me the department?
Employment.
Public service.
Public service.
Public service, yes.
Okay.
Second.
Then a motion, second discussion? Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That executive session is set. Any other items of new business? And we'll turn to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the commission on any items of city business, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and hear with us your thoughts on this.
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. What was the second executive session on? I couldn't hear that.
Union negotiation.
Union? Okay. I have a couple of things here. You talked about the leaky boot at the last meeting, about amending the contract, and I was wondering, is that amendment going to come before seven commissioners, or is this a staff thing that they're doing?
I don't presently know the answer to that question.
I'm a little concerned that staff may be taking some power away from the city commissioners. When you amend a contract, I think seven commissioners should vote on that amendment, and we should know, the public should know, when you do that, what the amendments are. There needs to be some transparency there.
Well, we're aware of the issue, we certainly have the ability to countermand the staff if we didn't agree with the direction. I will leave it to the law director to make sure that we, the law department to make sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's. I was wondering if I got that backwards or something. So, I, Mr. Heyburger, I assume we're on the straight and narrow in terms of following the requirements that we have to follow?
Yes, Mr. President, it's been a while since I've looked at that agreement, so I'm just kind of shooting off the top of my head, but it's my understanding that the amendments were subject to the city manager approval, and again, I believe that amendment was only to the start date, so the functional terms of the contract all remain the same.
Okay.
Okay. In regards to the city and county land bank, I'm a little concerned about this, and I have been for a long time, and I've been discussing this with some of the commissioners. I recently found out that the director will be quitting his job at the county land bank. I knew he was going to be our city employee, but I didn't know if he was going to hold dual jobs, dual loyalty there, and I hear he's going to be quitting his job when the grant comes through, and coming over to the city. Now, as far, as far as I can tell on the grant stipulations, that the grant is administered, it has to be administered to the county, and they have to administer that grant. Now, what's going to happen here is the director's going to quit his job, and then come over to the city. The grant's not coming to the city, it's coming to the county, and I'm concerned that there might be a legal problem here, where we might, if we go ahead with this arrangement, that we may have to pay the grant back, just like that housing debacle that we had. You know, if there's, if you're looping through the legal loopholes, we may have to pay that grant back later on. I don't know, it just, I think somebody should look into that before you leap over to this, because the federal government is expecting that money, that grant, to be applied to the county land bank, and now there's no director over there to administer that, because he's coming over to the city.
The agreement between the city and the county specifically addresses their reimbursement requirements to us, and it's been reviewed by our, by our legal counsel. I mean, I hear the scenario that you're describing, but I, I don't think that that can happen under the contract.
Does the federal government know that the director will be quitting his job over there at the county land bank?
I don't know if it knows or not, but I don't think anyone has an obligation to inform the federal government. It's a personnel decision for us, and it's a contract issue between the city and the county land bank. About federal issues.
I, I'm just concerned, I, I think you need to have caution here. That's up to you, but I don't want to pay back that grant. There's about 200 houses, at least, involved in this, so that's up to you. On the seal, is the Masonic gone? The Masonic design, that's completely gone on the seal?
Yes.
Okay. And if you go back to the original, I don't understand why you bothered spending $6,000 on a design. That is crazy, and nobody has told us how much it's going to cost to change everything out, letterhead, emblems on trucks, on uniforms. Does anybody have an estimate on that?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
My, my company's offered to do that seal for free, so there'll be no cost for that seal.
This one?
For that seal, yes.
And, and we did. We still have the bicentennial logo that's in use, by the way, I mean, so that, so, to be clear, the contract with, with Mr. Roth was to design the bicentennial logo, which is in use, and the bicentennial commission loves it, and we've seen that, and that'll be used, you know, through the bicentennial process for those kinds of events, and then what he did with the modifications to the seal, that he did for free. So, to be clear, we did not pay any money for any of the modifications to the sealed seal. That money was for the bicentennial logo and all of the other work that went into, it's not just the seals, a lot of other work that he did, in terms of how that is represented to the public, and what the different colors and symbols are, so.
Okay, so we won't be changing out seals on the dump trucks and all of that? We won't be changing out those seals?
We potentially would be, yeah, that, that wasn't, I was just addressing though. So, I was talking about the logo, the, for the logo for the bicentennial commission. If we do adopt a new seal, we would, we would over time modify, I don't know, you know, that's up to the, to the administration to figure out what they're going to do in terms of timing. I assume over time, as we replace vehicles, and they're repainted, and that kind of thing, we would replace the seals on the vehicles.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
My name's Michael Hacker, 510 Neal Street, Sandusky. My question is for the, the Matt. On this new proposal for, I guess it's like item number eight, that you're talking about, going to different neighborhoods and spotting out different properties, are you going to make it easier for property owners now that are purchasing properties to develop these properties without climbing through a bunch of loopholes in order to develop them? Because I just, I purchased one in 2014, and I have been, since the summer of 2014, trying to develop this, and I just now got approved for joining my property to my original property, but I wasn't allowed to keep it separate, like most, there's, there's other entities in town that can keep it separate and, and build on it, and I want to know why there's this double standard that some entities can do on vacant lots what they want, and other entities that want to build on vacant lots can. Is there a reason for that double standard? And are you going to make it easier for, you know, the homeowners to go through with their, their process?
Mr. Hacker, you said?
Yes.
Okay. Have you met with staff about these issues?
Yeah, I've been two and a half years meeting with them.
Okay. We, we can't evaluate, I mean, this, this is so specific to the situation, it's hard for us to evaluate this. Ms. Binnington had some response, I believe.
Through you, Mr. President, I was just going to say that, you know, our department is very aware of, of the issues, and have been trying to help this gentleman through the process, and I'm sorry that you feel that it is a double standard that has been set. I can't speak for what situations occur in the city illegally, basically, without getting permits, but once somebody comes to us, we try to help them through the process the best we can, doing it the right way and conforming to our codes, so if you have any, you know, I'm very aware of your situation, and would be happy to talk further tomorrow with you.
I've been approved as of Friday.
Yes, I know.
So, but I didn't want to join it together after two and a half years of trying to, you know, develop the lot, and then I changed my drawings like three times, and this year I, I hired a landscaper at $4,000 to landscape a section, and I'm going to build my backyard and my original house, and that, that was okay with the city. So then I, I come down to get a fence permit, so I can keep the neighbors out from both sides from trespassing and parking on my property, and I was told you can't build a fence on a vacant lot, you can't park on a vacant lot, and I brought to your attention, or your office's attention, over a month and a half ago, of over 20 some properties. In fact, two are right out the window here, when you walk out onto Meg Street, the law offices, one's got a parking lot on a vacant lot, where I'm told I can't even continue a driveway, that's already there. The other is a law office, has a fence across the front and down the side. I know, I know there's no permits, because you guys don't offer permits for vacant lots, right? Same with Firelands Hospital. Firelands Hospital is doing a great job, HAZF, developing their properties, but they are also allowed to put fences on vacant lots, and they keep these lots vacant, so they don't have to pay the, the taxes that it would cost to join them all together. They're, they're also, you know, they, they built a big sign on one vacant lot, I think their taxes are $35 a half, and the sign probably costs $15,000, maybe?
Mr. Lasco, you had something to add to the conversation?
Through you, Mr. President, to the gentleman at the podium, and I apologize, this is the first, I think, we've had a chance to meet, and I certainly welcome.
I didn't know you guys existed until Friday.
That's okay, no problem. And, and I would certainly welcome, you know, you coming in and being able to meet with us, because I know one of the big things I've heard personally since coming to Sandusky about 18 months ago is, historically, it's been a tough town to develop in for various reasons, and that's not just from an economic development standpoint, that's also from a housing development standpoint, and I think we're continuously trying to make strides to be more business and homeowner friendly, and I think we're doing it various ways. I think a good example is some of the housing programs we just rolled out, in which the application process is very smooth and efficient to get dollars into people's hands to make improvements. We also know there's a second tier of that, which is the actual development process, the permitting process, when people want to actually invest in their properties, to not make it a challenge, at the same time be sensitive to neighbors, so I certainly wouldn't be the first to say that we have all the answers, and we're certainly receptive to feedback of people's experience of the process. I think we need to constantly make changes and updates and improvements to be more efficient, and I would certainly welcome that conversation, whether it's one-on-one, or whether it's a couple of folks from multiple departments. This is good feedback that we need to know what, you know, a process on paper may not be effective in implementation, and I think we need to hear that, and I'd love to have that conversation with you.
I'm just concerned, you know, for other people that are interested in doing the same thing that I, I did, take a belighted piece of property, purchase it, want to develop it, came to the city first, and asked them if I could build on it, they said, yep, as long as you abide by the setbacks, front, back, and sides, you can build on it. I purchased it, six months later, they say no. So, I say, okay, then they tell me I got to join my properties, so I find out, I got to get a new deed through the county. I get a new deed, go to join it, no, I got to deal with the city. So then I come down to the city, I got to do all this new surveys, new deeds, and I do all, and you know, I, I say, it's going to cost me too much. So, I said, I'm going to put my garage in my backyard, continue the drive, and they said, you can do that. So, this year, I go to continue my drive and put a fence, nope, can't do that. So now I'm back to, now I got landscaping under a contract, it's cost me $4,000 in a spot where I needed a driveway, so.
Mr. Hacker, I hope you do meet with Mr. Lasco, and I, I think we, we recognize, and Mr. Lasco shared with me, and Mr. Wobster shared with me, that there's some things that we could do to improve some of those operations, and we want to be development-friendly, and we thank you for your investment and your patience, and I hope you will give that feedback to Mr. Lasco, because I think you will find that these folks are genuinely interested in finding out how we could do a better job, and it sounds like your experience is one that we need to learn from.
Okay, the only thing I did find out that was, you know, that they would do for me, was give me a permit to fix the sidewalk. That was no problem getting that.
Okay, thank you for that, sir.
Thank you again.
Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Matt Morgan, 1003 West Osborne Street. My brief comments are primarily to Chief Orzak and through him to the rest of the police department. I did, this past week, have a unique opportunity to have the community outreach officers, both Officer Rankin and Costante, come out to my store, as I had a, a minor who was caught shoplifting. And I do want to say that because of those efforts, you know, while police often find people at their worst, and in this case, she made a very poor decision, but the three of us with this young lady were able to sit down, and instead of filling a spot in the detention home, we talked about that poor decision, and instead, we turned it into a learning lesson, into a life lesson for her, in a way that I, I hope will leave a lasting impression on her, that the police are not just out to arrest people and make, make lives miserable. But those two officers came out to my store, and they spent the time, and they had the understanding, the compassion, to sit down, work with me as the business owner, and this young lady, to make sure that all parties involved were, were satisfied, and that we left everything on, on a positive note, instead of having things end with, you know, taking a kid to a detention home doesn't, in my opinion, teach them a lesson, it doesn't do much to deter future use. But in this case, those two officers, I feel, made a good impression with her, and as a business owner, let alone a resident as well, I am very happy that they do what they do, and to have them in our neighborhoods to interact with us. So, I wanted to share that with, with you and you all, that this is a program that is, is working, and I believe is very beneficial, if my anecdote here can be broadened to others. If you're a resident or a business owner, interact with them, they're, they're great outgoing people, and if you can find resolutions like this as well, then so much the better for everyone. Thank you.
Great story, thank you for sharing it.
Hi, Vicki Byrd, 2114 Wilbert Street. Kind of thought I'd show up just to say thanks for the good work that's been done over the last years. I mean, I know everybody's been talking about the issue eight money, where it's getting spent, going here, going here, hiring, 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 what are we doing with it? And I think a lot of those answers, questions were answered for me today. I personally like where we're going. I will say something for Eric, as far as the city manager. I think it's kind of silly to have a five-year plan, and the possibility of not the same city managers that helped us get this far, and pretty much helping orchestrate with everybody's help, what we're going into, because I know I'm looking forward to it. It took the city how long to get where we're at? It's not going to take five years to get out of it, and people need to realize that, because everybody's in a hurry. I want you in my neighborhood, too, and that's why I'm standing here. You have been, and it's a thank you. It's a thank you for the garage with all the vermin that was running around, it's been tore down, it looks nice, we're very appreciative, as are my neighbors. We're excited about the Habitat for Humanity house that's going up, that's being built over property where someone in the city was killed, murdered. It's nice to see a home going in there to help somebody else. I'm excited to see some work's going to be done in Wilbert Street Park, the sooner the better. There are children that use that park. My concern right now is the traffic on Wilson and Wilbert, due to the now being a cul-de-sac, buses running on Lane Street, you know, it's, it's pretty much just an alley, needs to be taken care of. My major concern is, one day walking to Dollar General store, there is nowhere to cross Sanford, Venice, Tiffin, and the Route Six overpass. There is no wheelchair curb crossing line, anything to cross the street there. I crossed where I thought was best and safest, which is the new Route Six, and it just took a yahoo, myself, my grandchildren were almost hit, I don't know how you could miss it, it was twins in a stroller, little boy walking with me, holding his hands, pushing in a stroller, a car actually turned left off of Sanford and stopped just short of us, and instead of letting us continue to pass, went around us. So, we waited for him, and I said a few words. But that intersection needs, it needs left turn signals, pulling off a Tiffin Ave onto Sanford, left turn signals coming off of, off the overpass from West, coming into town, and a left turn signal turning left there onto Venice Road, as if you're going to Dollar General, K and K Interiors. It's very dangerous, there's nowhere to cross. What are we supposed, no button to push, no nothing, and we do walk, we walk to the Dairy Queen, we walk to the store, I won't be walking to the store for a while, I'll just be walking to the Dairy Queen, because there's really no safe way to get to that store, that, all those people in that neighborhood, now, I'm not going to say all, a lot of them get in cars and drive, but there are a lot of kids and a lot of adults that walk to that store, because it's only about three blocks away, no pointing, driving, but I'm hoping that you're getting a grant for safety project, hopefully maybe some of that money can be used, so that people can safely either ride their bikes, even if it wheelchair accessible, cross the street to get to where they need to go. I need, I would like to have it explained to me what you voted on, as far as the no smoking in Shoreline Park, because I stand here as a smoker who needs a I need, I would like to have it explained to me what you voted on as far as the no smoking in Shoreline Park, because I stand here as a smoker who needs a cigarette right now. Okay? But you know what? I can go to a park with my grandchildren and not smoke a cigarette while I'm there. I would hope to think if I got in my vehicle, of course, not with the kids, with my window cracked, would I be fined? Sitting in my vehicle in a parking spot, 25, 6, 7 feet away, it doesn't matter to me whether you prohibit smoking in Shoreline Park or not. My concern is how it's going to be enforced. From what I read in the newspaper, it's somebody's going to say, oh, hey bud, you're not allowed to smoke here. I'm not always apt to tell somebody that can and cannot do something. I mean, that's the impression that I got. It's going to be word of mouth. Well, once they know, and it's, oh, you're not allowed to smoke here, will you put that cigarette out? Somebody's going to come back and say something. There's going to be somebody's either don't have it at all, if you're going to allow it, put a little cigarette thing up on the sidewalk at the edge of the park or something like that. You know, when you say things like that, it makes me feel like I'm in the state of California, which smoking there is basically prohibited anywhere, anywhere, even on a beach with nobody around you, and I understand what you're saying. I don't want my smoke to get into a kid's face, but I'm also not going to sit and blow my smoke in a kid's face. If I need to smoke a cigarette, I'll put it off for a while and I'll walk away, but I would just, it's the enforcement issue. I mean, and do we have enough police officers? We need to hire more to be running down to Shoreline Park because somebody's making a phone call, because somebody's smoking a cigarette, and they refuse to put it out. Why not Lyons Park?
So, to answer your question tonight, Mrs. Byrd, what we passed tentatively, subject to a second reading at the next meeting, was a modification of what was passed the last meeting. Last meeting was, was, the proposal then was to completely ban smoking in Shoreline Park, and what we voted on tonight was to limit it to within 25 feet of playground equipment and apply it citywide, but not the rest of the park.
Okay. The $100.50 fine for littering. Doesn't the city of Sandusky already have a littering org, you know, law?
We do, but it's left to the discretion of the court in many communities in order to make the point a little bit more emphatic, have a minimum fine. We just to have, we've just never adopted one.
So we don't have a fine? If I can throw out trash and not necessarily have to pay a fine?
It's misdemeanor, and it's subject to the discretion of the court.
Okay.
And some communities have said, no, this is pretty important to us. We, we want a minimum fine.
Okay.
And that's what, that's what we ask for the staff to prepare legislation to make that happen.
Okay, I mean, and that's just littering in general, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right. That's, like I said, I don't, it doesn't matter whether you're smoking a park or not. I'd rather not see it anyways because it's not good for the children. They don't need to see it, you know. They imitate what they live, so. The Neighborhood Initiative, I'm excited to hear about that. And again, like I said, as far as when you start discussing about renewing of contracts, I think it's kind of silly to go forward with a city manager who's helped, been very upfront and very honest, and helped a lot of us get to this point, and was willing to sit and talk to crazy people like me sometimes and have to listen to me and get us here. So I would say, by all means, please, give the young man an opportunity to stay more than a few years, because we've all been through that revolving door of city managers in this city, and that's hopefully done. That's all we have to say.
Thank you for being here tonight, Mrs. Byrd.
Hi, Jennifer Brenly, 1328 Waverly Road, Sandusky, Ohio. Yes, I still live in Sandusky. Okay, I just want to make a special note about the Russell Classic. In year 2006, I lost a very dear friend of mine. He was 48 with bone cancer. He owned a business in Sandusky, restaurant and repair equipment. Every restaurant in this town called Mr. Romick. We called him Russell. It was a nickname for him. And one day, I don't know if you know Schaefer Construction, them boys, we were riding home from a Browns game, and we decided to do a perch tournament because he loved it. Before you knew it, first one was at my bar when I owned it in 2006. We had 11 boats. Last Saturday, we always have it the Saturday before Father's Day. Last Saturday, we had 34 boats. We had our 10-year anniversary, and we have managed to collect $83,000 in 10 years over tiptickets, and most of it was Salem. Just three years ago, we picked up Star Lanes. Just a year ago, we picked up Camp Street Bar. Every bar is allowed five if you have a legal bingo license. We end up making more than $5,000 a year, so we had to become a 50C3 blah, 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 like the boosters, which we did. And Tim Dorsey, I don't know if you remember him, he just got married, had a kid, bought a house, then found out he had cancer. Russell Classic helped pay his mortgage payment many a months till his family got their feet back on the ground and he could continue with his chemo. We have gone to older people's house in Erie County, and Ray Schaefer, Schaefer Construction will build a ramp for that person for free of charge, maybe charge the Russell Classic materials. It's a very, very, very good thing, and I can't tell you how much money goes to Stein Hospice. We want to keep our money in Erie County. We've always tried. So this year, with it being our 10-year, we wanted to donate $10,000 to the city of Sandusky, which Eric and I are working on very passionately, and I think it's pretty much a goal for a concession stand at the ballpark. I don't know if we're going to get it done or get the money to you in time to get it done this year, but we hope next year it will be there. And every time you send a Camp Street or Star Lanes or Salem or any other bar that does tickets for charities, buy five bucks. Ain't going to break you. You know, it helps a lot of people, and we give scholarships. We have for the past 10 years, Perkins, Margarita, and Sandusky and St. Mary's. We've done it the past, oh, eight years, and we're, matter of fact, Mary Fuqua is helping me and Tim work on a better arrangement to apply for our scholarships, give them a little challenge. And that's all I wanted to say on a good note, and you're all doing a great job, and sir, I believe they probably would have helped you. Two and a half years ago, we didn't have the help we have now, you know, and I just hope we can keep going, but on a personal note, I'd like to see less white, no more white collar people hired, more of the physical sons, you know, going to go out there and, you know what I mean. Yeah. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brenly, for being here. Thank you for all the good work that you do. If there is no one else present who wishes to address the commission, we will take a five-minute recess. Do you want to be two minutes?